I'd like to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. This is the first day of November 2021, and at this time, we'll have the invocation by Chairman Larry Yoder and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Josh Lael. If you will, please rise.
Our county must gracious, we appreciate the opportunity we have to come together this evening in order that we might do the things that you would like to see done in county government. We'd ask that you be with those first responders who put their lives on the line each and every day to respond to those emergencies in our community, in our state, and in our country, and in foreign land. We'd ask you to be with them, keep them safe, so they can return back home to their families. Be with our law enforcement, be with our military, be with our leaders on the federal, state, and local level, and be with those who have been sick and afflicted, for we ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please lift the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. On the Commissioners' report tonight, I'd like to send our condolences out to the family of former County Commissioner Harry Robertson. Harry Robertson was an outstanding commissioner. He's been a leader in this community, a man who served God, served his country in the Korean War, continued to serve his country, his state, and his community. He loved his family and loved Alexander County. There wasn't a time that didn't go by that I didn't talk to Harry that he didn't have something to say about the county, the direction it's going, or the direction it wasn't going. He always had Alexander County in his heart, and I'd like to send our prayers and thoughts out to his family on the loss of a loved one, a tremendous asset that has been lost to this community. And I know that Harry is resting in peace now, and our prayers are for he and his family. On another item, I was at a Transportation Committee meeting this past week on Wednesday, I believe it was, Tuesday or Wednesday, and there's things going on in our Nor County Department of Transportation that a lot of us are probably not aware of. There's a funding issue that has come about in DOT. The money's not there, and they're not able to do some of the things that they have done. However, our NC-127 project at this time is still set to go, and the intersection at County Home Road and NC-16 is still set to go. That's not to say that they absolutely positively will happen, because anything could happen in the next few years that would cause them to move those projects out. But as most of you know, the DOT has undergone tremendous changes. The way the board is appointed has been changed. The legislature gets to appoint a couple, two or three people to the board, and the others are appointed by the governor. And with that being said, also, we need to remember that a lot of electric cars are coming out. Innovation and new technology in motor vehicles has caused the way that our gasoline taxes are collected in the form that people with electric cars are not buying gasoline. So therefore, if they're not buying gasoline, that should tell you all one thing: they're not paying gasoline tax. So that along with COVID and people not working, not traveling, and some other issues that have happened, has caused DOT not to have the revenue that they have, that they need, in order to proceed with the projects that they have on hand. They will, I hope, in the near future, that our legislature and the folks there in Raleigh will get together and find some type of way to reform this gasoline tax, so that we're able to continue to see some progress in our highways in North Carolina. We should be hearing more about that in the very near future, and I know that the people that serve on the Transportation Board are very concerned about this, and so are the leaders in your communities, are concerned about it because of what it may, how it's going to affect our highways and the things that need to be done to continue to improve and to make our highways better and safer. Does any other Commissioner have a report tonight? Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we'll have the adoption of the agenda. I hope each and every one of you had an opportunity to check our agenda out, and at this time, I entertain a motion to... I need to add one item, and that's correct. Under closed session, under Nor County General Statute 143, Dace 318.11A, it'll be subsection 3 will be added to go along with 4, 5, and 6, economic development, contractual, and personnel, and we need to add that. And adding that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Motion is made, and second, any discussion. There being none, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Also, tonight, Commissioner Pennell, Marty Pennell will not be with us tonight. He had other issues that he had to take care of, and he will be absent from tonight's meeting. Madam Clerk, I believe we had four people signed up to speak. So that everybody will understand what goes on in the public comment, the public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for each public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select one person to represent a group of citizens with the same concerns or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. Any citizen wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. So at this time, we do have four people who are signed up, and our first speaker should be Macy Jones.
Good evening. I don't want to break any rules. Can I take this off? All right. Good evening, Chairman Yoder and County Commissioners. My name is Macy Jones, and I'm here tonight to come and speak up for the residents of Alexander County. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 has set aside $7,283,353 for Alexander County. This money can be used to support public health expenditures, address negative economic income packs to the community, replace lost public sector revenue, provide premium pay for essential workers, and invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. It is my understanding that the county has chosen option five. All $7 million will go into water and sewer. I am here tonight to ask the governing body to reconsider this option. My question to the Board is, and I know you cannot answer, has anyone thought about using the money to offer bonuses for frontline workers, EMS, rescue, fire, law enforcement, and teachers? Has anyone thought about providing childcare assistance and helping DSS, United Way Partnership for Children, and other entities in the counties? Has anyone thought about offering grants to 501(c)(3)'s and businesses who may be struggling? How about the homeless coalition who is in need of money? How about fuel and expenses for food pantries and churches? I am asking you tonight to reconsider using this entire amount of $7,283,353 for water and sewer, and put at least $1 million of the seven into programs that have the potential to benefit all the citizens in this community. Thank you.
Thanks. I lost my paper. Diane Little, second.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I had originally planned to share the complete results of the Community Needs Survey with you. It was drafted by the United Way of Alexander County, but the entire analysis of the relationship between the age groups and the residential areas, that part of the analysis is not complete. It's quite complex, so we're still working on that. But I am able to share with you the two more important parts, the preliminary results from the countywide profile. I'll show you how the county voted on these issues, and then how each residential area voted. And I just have a simple handout here that I'm going to ask Rick to pass down. These results will show you the most critical needs, down to the least critical needs, for the entire county, first of all, and then for each residential area, which we divided into school districts, to keep it very simple for our residents. Hopefully, at your next meeting, I'll have a full report, and I'll get on that agenda to present that to you. If you look at this, you will see, again, I think the areas ranked are up there, and then you will see the countywide results where broadband was the most critical need. Does everybody see what I'm talking about? Okay, good. And then education was second, healthcare third, housing was fourth and fifth, and transportation tied for sixth and seventh as the least critical need. Note that food insecurity and homelessness did not place in the countywide ratings, but they did, and they do appear in the residential ratings. And, you know, this is something that'll take you a minute or two at your leisure time to digest, I know, but we had about 148 responses, and you will see below on the residential area, the results for Bethlehem. For instance, their first critical need was education, and their second one was food insecurity. So there's one that did not appear in the countywide profile but does in a residential profile. Their third is healthcare, and then homeless, and then broadband, and sixth, housing and transportation, and seventh, also transportation. I'll explain to you later how those two are repeated, because you'll see a lot of this in the survey. Some folks ranked from 1 to 3, some folks ranked from 1 to 5, and so it got very complex. And some folks would take broadband and give it three ratings in one category, so it was a little hard to decipher. You'll also see some repetitions here. For instance, Ellendale's first need broadband and healthcare equally, and if you look at their third need, broadband and healthcare appear again there. So I just leave that with you, because I know it will take you some time to, you know, decipher it and understand what's going on, and then I will give you a full report later on. In the meantime, if you do discover that you have any money remaining from other sources, such as the American Rescue Plan, you'll have some areas here perhaps to look at and give reference to. Thank you for your time.
Number three, the third speaker is the Bridge Community, Priscilla Jenkins.
Good evening. I am Priscilla Jenkins, CEO and founder of the Bridge Community Incorporated. For those that may not know, the Bridge Community is a vital innovative 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation with a mission to improve lives across the diverse communities we serve in Alexander County. We accomplish this by bridging the gap between the needs of individuals or families and the resources available in Alexander and surrounding counties in North Carolina. We do not duplicate services that already exist, yet partner with existing charitable organizations, or create new services as opportunity presents itself. The Bridge Community would like to thank you, the Commissioners, as well as our other Alexander County partners for your support and willingness to work with us. I am here today to bring attention and ask for monetary support for an ever-growing population of county adults and students displaced from permanent housing or our homeless population. Alexander County's school system defines homelessness as those persons with no permanent address. That would include persons that are living in cars, at a friend's, on someone's couch, in a tent, and we have been told about a public restroom that was deserted, that someone lived in. The school system reported approximately 87 homeless children in Alexander County's school system for 2020. One-third of the patrons that received meals at Cafe 957 are homeless. Since February of this year, the Bridge Community has housed in a local hotel over 25 clients, prevented 22 evictions, and provided housing assistance for two domestic clients, violence clients. Because services are limited in Alexander County, many times our clients were referred to our surrounding county for extended services. As a result of COVID-19, Alexander County has suffered exponentially in employer/employee relations income to the cost of living ratios and stable housing. Parents are losing employment opportunities when they have to stay at home with their sick children. Landlords are not renting to persons with government subsidies rental assistance. Alexander County is in need of more consistent available housing opportunities for our neighbors that have found themselves in unfavorable financial situations. A homeless transitional housing task force has been established and will begin offering temporary shelter the weekend of November 26, Friday and Saturday nights, for 14 weeks. There will be a safe, warm environment available with the opportunity for a shower and four meals. Unfortunately, this is temporarily. A more permanent opportunity needs to be put in place. This is where you come in. We are asking that you set aside $2 million from the American Rescue Plan for the research and establishment of our county's first shelter, a more permanent help. Alexander County could use a model of the shelters in our surrounding counties, as it is not necessary to reinvent the wheel. The financial request would include staffing and support services to our residents for the first three years. The Bridge Community is grateful to serve in our county. We're looking forward to working with our local government to ensure the needs of our neighbors are met while supporting them in their journey to self-sufficiency. Thank you for your service and commitment to the residents of Alexander County.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item number two on the agenda is the 2018 Waterline Extension Project Update. Mr. R.J. Mosley with Senior Project Manager at McGill Associates. Excuse me, just one second. Just, no, come on, it's okay. We have one, a fourth person on the agenda to speak, Karen Howell. I don't see Karen here. Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Now, if you don't mind, sir, go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. This is a project update, as you well know, for the 2018 Waterline Extension Project, and it is a long time coming now, as we know projects like this develop rather slowly over time, but we're happy to report that this one is at the point of completion. I think you all may have in your packets a map that we prepared that shows the areas within the county, the various project areas where water lines were extended and connected to the existing system that the county owns and has an operational agreement with the City of Hickory on. And so, generally speaking, for those in the audience that don't have that information in front of them, the 2018 Waterline Project was roughly 71,100 total linear feet of six-inch and eight-inch water line. It was scattered throughout various parts of the county and was constructed largely to close several dead-end loops within the existing distribution system, and also to extend service to some areas that had made requests for such service to grow the customer base of the water system as well. And actually, that project was received bids in that 2019 timeframe now, and the bids on that project were rather advantageous. And so, there was a number of other areas that came up where folks were looking to receive water service beyond the original 2018 project, and so we dubbed a second contract by the similar name. We called it the 2019 Projects. And so, that extended service to even more areas, totaling up to another 11,500 linear feet. And so, I'm happy to report now that all of those projects from the 2018 and the 2019 water projects are complete, except for one final area that came up late in the 2019 project area, and that was an area down near the southern portion of the county, which was off B&amp;T Lane, and that was Emerald Point and Crappy Cove Drive. Those are the last two projects that your utility contractor is scheduled to work on, and we expect those areas, they're pretty small in nature by comparison to the rest of the job. So that should be completed within the next 60 days or so. But, you know, as of right now, the system is operational. All the final approvals, except for Crappy Cove, Emerald Point, are in hand, and the city is coordinating with county staff as necessary to start hooking people on as they submit their requests. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about any one of those projects.
Well done. I think one of the most important things we need to explain to people is that they do need to call the City of Hickory to get those water taps, and that's vitally important. And we need to make sure that where these water lines are, that these people know to make that call. So I'm sure you folks may have gotten some calls. I know the county's already gotten some calls. I've gotten some calls, so, you know, and I'm sure the other Commissioners may have gotten some calls, but now that it's complete, and that's very good. Look forward to the rest of being completed here shortly. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Item number three on the agenda, Vaya PowerPoint presentation, Zach Shepard, Vaya Health Community Relations Regional Director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for having me. Introduce myself. I'm Zach Shepard. I am the Regional Community Relations Director that will be serving Alexander County. Previously, I worked with Alexander County in a different role at Vaya Health, so I am familiar with the county, and it's a pleasure to be able to continue to work in the county. Tonight, I'd like to just go over some updates to share with you. I know Mr. French, as Chairman of our Board, probably keeps you up to date and pretty well informed about what's going on with Vaya. So some of this may be redundant, or it may be stuff that you've already heard, but some may be some new information as well. So I'm just going to go through this really quick. Feel free to stop me and ask questions along the way if you need to do so. Okay, Vaya Health, we are a local government agency. We manage the publicly funded service and supports for individuals with mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. Currently, that is a 22-county catchment area in western North Carolina. We are a subdivision of the state of North Carolina. Previously, we were known as Area Authorities, and now referred to as Local Management Entities and Managed Care Organizations. Currently, we offer three distinct health plans, a mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disability health plan for those who qualify for Medicaid. We also offer a mental health, substance use, and intellectual disability health plan for those who are uninsured or underinsured. And then third, we offer a home and community-based services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This is also known as the Innovations Waiver. Okay, as we are going through managed care overhaul in the state with Medicaid, this has, is affecting the services and the supports that we will offer to our members. It will cover integrated physical health, pharmacy, behavioral health, and intellectual and developmental disability services, and this will be under our managed care contract. This will be services for the most complex and high-need members. The other plans that will be offered, known as standard plans, that have already begun, will be caring for the mild to moderate behavioral health population, and will cover those services, including inpatient, outpatient crisis, and some substance use, and overlap with enhanced services. So we are currently, as I said, we've, the standard plans for the state of North Carolina have taken effect as of July of this year, and we are currently working on being ready at Vaya for the initiation of the tailored plans in next, slated to be July of next year, in 2022. Okay, so a little bit about that Medicaid transformation that we're, that we will be going through. The goals are to deliver whole-person care, unite communities, to address member needs, and deploy cost-effective solutions, transition to provider-based care management at the site of care, improve member experience, reduce provider-administered burden, support a healthier North Carolina, and address unique needs of historically marginalized populations. The prepaid health plans, which are the managed care plans that will be, that will be serving members, there will be three types of these plans. As I said, there will be the standard plan that has already been initiated and is currently being offered in the state. There will be the tailored plans, which is one of the plans which Vaya has been awarded. And then there will also be a tribal option for our indigenous communities. This is a breakdown, kind of what the standard plans and the tailored plans look like and who they will cover. Standard plans already operating, those awards have been given to four entities and are serving six health regions, and will have one provider-led entity serving regions 3 and 5. And as I said, this took place, initiated in July of 2021. The tailored plan will have a whole-person care approach. As I said, it will be integrated care, which will take into effect all of the behavioral health, physical health, and pharmacological needs of those members. These plans have been awarded, and as I said, Vaya was awarded one of those plans. We are slated to go live with that July of 2022. Standard plans, these are the entities that are, have been awarded standard plan with the state, and as I said, those have went live already and are currently up and running. So this is the population of beneficiaries for the standard plans. As I said, these will be more mild to moderate needs, but this will include all facets of healthcare, physical health, behavioral health, and pharmacy needs. As I said, we were awarded at Vaya the tailored plan award July 26 of this year. We are working on some deliverables to the Department of Health and Human Services. Those happen 30, 60, and 90 days post-award. In process of developing contracts with pharmacy and physical health providers is that it will be a new component to our plans. And then we are slated to go live on July 1, 2022, or one year post-award as determined by the Department of Health and Human Services. by the Department of Health and Human Services. This gives a, just a quick look at our tailored plan rollout and kind of our target dates on some of these goals. Tailored plan populations, this gives a more succinct look at who will be benefiting from these tailored plans. So as I said, these will be the more severe, high-need, high-risk members in the community. And I won't go through all of these different points, but you're, feel free to look through those and get some explanation for who will be benefiting from those plans. Okay, this kind of gives a, a good concrete look at what the numbers will be looking like for Alexander County. This is an estimate. It is by no means in concrete or set in stone. The Medicaid-eligible residents in the county come to somewhere around 8,400. We estimate that around, close to 7,800 transition to standard plans in July of this year. So that will leave somewhere in the neighborhood of 639 individuals who will be receiving a tailored plan through Vaya Health and be eligible come this next year when the plans go live. Okay, there's a lot of crossover that happens with people that are transitioning plans between the standard plans and the tailored plans, and those that are not yet receiving tailored plans, but will be eligible. Lot of activity going on, on transitioning those folks. This just kind of shows some of the activity around that and how we've been all hands-on-deck in transitioning and making sure that those members have everything they need, that nothing gets dropped, and that they have continuity of services through the transition. Okay, this is some of the, the most prominent news that we've got going on in the organization as we have, we are underway with consolidation with Cardinal Innovations. And with that consolidation, we have picked up a, another nine counties to our catchment area. And so that effectively puts us at a count of 31 total counties over the state. And as you can see from the map, we've, those nine counties are a little bit further east, more in the Piedmont area that we have picked up. And we have been working with those counties diligently to be prepared for them to come onboard fully with us by the end of this calendar year. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
I guess one of the questions that I would have that would end this thing, and I know that when people start switching over and everything, changing things, the educational process and how they're going to find out this information so they'll know what to do, because this can be very technical for a lot of people.
Yes, sir.
And it's a big change.
Yes, sir. Yes. So with those standard plans that have already gone into place, there was a large campaign to get the word out about questions and who to contact if the members have particular questions about the process. That is still available to folks who have questions about standard plans, or maybe those folks that have gone into standard plans and say, maybe I don't need to be in this particular plan, maybe I need to be in this other plan. They can call the broker at the state and, and ask those questions, and they've been provided that number and those resources for how to get transitioned to the appropriate plan. Of course, we will also be doing that as well as we roll out, making sure that everyone has appropriate information and leave, you know, pretty much an open door to help answer any questions and, and facilitate the process of transition.
Very good. Any questions?
Thanks a lot. Good information. Lot of changes, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Lot of changes. You know, one thing I wouldn't want to comment here, and I know you're giving us an update, but on mental health aspect of this thing. Doesn't mean most of you, I don't know. Yesterday, it was very interesting on Fox Sports when you had the guy step up and talk about his mental health and about not being ashamed to go help for, look for help. And you're talking about a 275-pound man that played, I believe he played tackle, I'm not sure. I just read the information on the internet. And I think that's one of the most valuable things that we can do for people also, to make sure that we get the information out on mental health, so that they will understand that, you know, it's no disgrace to ask for help and that they really need to do that. And I was impressed with these folks yesterday that, in reading about it, it just impressed me that these folks have found no shame in asking for help. And the things that we can do, because I know that Vaya Health can offer a tremendous amount of assets to these people to help them and assist them to have a, a normal life if they work hard and do the things that they're asked to do, that they can, they can come through these things. And I appreciate you being here, appreciate the information, and thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'll, I'll be happy to leave my contact information for the, for all the board members. So feel free to contact me anytime if you've got questions or, or concerns.
That'd be very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Item number four on the agenda, National Farmer's Farm City Week, Allison Brown, County Extension Director.
Good evening, gentlemen, county manager, madam clerk. Thank you for having me tonight. One of my most favorite things to talk about is agriculture, so that's, that feels like home to me. First, want to recognize also who brought with me tonight is my coworkers, Julie Campbell, she's our administrative assistant, and I could not do without her. And then we have DJ Sawyer, he's our 4-H agent. And then Carrie Mitchell is our consumer and commercial horticulture agent. And then Dar Holcomb is not able to be with us tonight, but she's our family consumer science agent. So they have all helped to contribute to the baskets that we were able to bring to you tonight and the bags. So we wanted to share a little bit about and highlight agriculture in Alexander County, because we're very proud of it, and as we, I'm sure you are as well. But Farm City Week is basically to highlight the relationship between agriculture, farmers, the farming community, and the, the city, and how that, whether that's merchants, or consumers, or however it be, that they're intertwined and they have to work together. And so Farm City Week is celebrated the week before Thanksgiving and recognizes the contributions that farmers make to both rural and urban settings. Farms and ranches have long been an essential part of our very existence. Whether a generational farm or a new and beginning farm, Alexander County farms continue to provide economic, environmental, and health benefits to people. In the 2017 Ag Census, it was reported over $176 million of crops, livestock, poultry, and prod, farm products was sold from Alexander County farmers. Alexander County Cooperative Extension celebrates the contributions that agriculture brings to our local economy, what, with jobs, while also recognizing the benefit farmers receive from urban centers. Distributors, restaurants, grocers, producers, and more allow for the expanded utilization of the farm product. Whether they provide food, medicines, or textiles to consumers, they have an economic impact in their city and rural communities, too. A spotlight has been shown on the network of how food moves from the farm to our table within the last year and a half. This experience has shown how important locally-produced products are to us. Observing Farm City Week is important to remind us all to be thankful to those that produce the things we need in life that we cannot ourselves provide. Farmers and ranchers continuously seek ways to improve farming methods while providing safe and healthy products. While we consider where the food on our table comes from during this upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, think about the impact of farms on your life. No matter where we live, on, on the farm or in the city, a farmer touches our lives. And just so that you and, and everyone listening knows, that National Farm City Week began as a joint resolution by Congress in 1957, calling for a presidential proclamation declaring National Farm City Week. This was President Dwight Eisenhower declared the observance in October to recognize the contributions farms make to both rural and urban communities. And just as, just to highlight just a couple of things, Alexander County farms, the average acres is 100 acres on the average farm. The average age of farmers is 56 years old. So while when I was younger, I used to think that that was, had some age to it. But as I have gotten older, I no longer think that that is very old. And also, just to, just to highlight that we have on average about 544 farms in Alexander County. Beef cattle, we rank 13th in the state, which that's pretty good considering we're the 88th, you know, largest county. So, and then we, in layers poultry, we're ranked fourth in North Carolina. So, and in broilers, we're 12th. So of course, we all know that poultry is a huge aspect of, of our county and brings in a lot of dollars to our citizens and that we are, you know, family farms. We may, we may grow for a company, but it's the women and the children and the husbands running the farms. And it's not a factory farm. So I appreciate your time and thank you for allowing me to talk a little bit about agriculture and what it means to Alexander County, and how appreciative we are of the farmers and the job that they do every day. And some of the products you'll see in your baskets are, they're, you know, all from Alexander County. And then, of course, the beef, the ground beef that you receive, we have a new surge into of local producers actually, marketing, direct marketing their own beef from their farm. So that was seen as a result of COVID and the restrictions to getting things to the grocery stores that we saw. So farmers have answered the call and the need and saw where consumers had a need and, and they've stepped up to make it happen, so, like we always do. And I appreciate that from them and, and from the support from the consumers as well. So, thank you.
Very good. You know, farmers are very, very valuable to us, and, and they do a tremendous job. And this county agriculture is, I mean, it's there and, and they produce a lot of products that are sold and shipped out of the county and brings a lot of revenue into the county. And I know, been out to you once or twice, you know, to check on the farms and check on the, the flooding and what happened in the county. You know, it's just amazing to see what happens. And, you know, I guess the most amazing thing to me, I'm just going to add this in because I was at somebody's farm and I think, I know Kent Herman, I think he was doing it, and a couple of other farmers were doing it, how they were grazing their cattle and cut down on the number of acres to a cow and everything. And it's, it's amazing to watch how the progress has been made over the years and how they're using their, they're utilizing their land to produce more on less acres. And it's just, the advancement of farming is just unbelievable. And our farmers are to be committed for the job they do to support this, the local community and also the nation, because they ship a lot out, and we appreciate it.
You know, as a cooperative extension, we're just glad to be able to work with the, the farming community and, and to shed a little bit of light on that and, and share that with you all tonight. So we're very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number five on the agenda is Power Plant Worker Appreciation Day Proclamation. In your agenda, you will find that proclamation. This is Power Plant Worker Appreciation Day Proclamation. Whereas November 1st is designated as a Power Plant Worker Appreciation Day in recognition of men and women who generate the electricity we all depend on. And whereas these workers who power our lives deserve recognition and should know how much we respect, value, and appreciate them for their, appreciate them for reliably providing one of life's essential services 24 hours a day. And whereas these workers give back to the local communities where they live and work by volunteering their time and talents and also providing financial contributions to nonprofits. And whereas many power plants serve as the bedrock of entire communities by contributing to our area vitality and economic growth, providing high-wage jo, high-wage jobs and generating millions in annual property and other taxes. And whereas Alexander County is home to Oxford and Lookout Hydro stations, which combined general, which combine general reliable energy to serve homes and businesses in our area. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims November 1st, 2021, as Power Plant Appreciation Day and expresses its appreciation to the employees of Oxford and Lookout Hydro stations for dedicated, for their dedicated service. This the first day of November, 2021. And gentlemen, I'd make that in a form of emotion. As most of you know, this plant down here at Duke Powers, they continue to work on it and it continues to generate power. And we know that Duke Energy has been a major contributing factor in the lives of people in Alexander County and to the local government. They've, they've assisted us in parks, and not only do they provide power for us, but they really do reinvest in the community and do things to make the county better and to make the communities better and to make it better for our citizens to have someplace to go and enjoy our lakes and the shores of the, the rivers and the streams that they have dammed up in order that they will be able to produce power. And we appreciate these employees and the work that they do. And as I say, I make that in a form of emotion on the proclamation.
Second.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? There being then, all those in favor, indicate raising your hand. Those approve likewise, the motion carries. Item number six, Order Declaring a Road Closure for, for the Annual Alexander County Christmas Parade. And we will have a Christmas parade this year. And the ordinance declaring the road closure, of course, is found in your packet. And this road will be closed the first Saturday of every December from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the road description is wild down road to the intersection of Highway 90, right onto Highway 90, right on Main Avenue Drive, left on Highway 16 South, right on First Avenue Left on 7th Avenue, and right on Cougar Avenue. A portion of school drive from Alexander Central High School to the intersection of Wild Down Road will also be closed. These ordinance will become effective upon its adoption, and this will be so that we'll be able to have our Christmas parade and block the roads off safely so that we'll make sure that the participants in the Christmas parade are well protected. I entertain a motion to approve this declaration of the road closure.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance for road closure for the Alexander County Christmas Parade.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There being then, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven, Alexander County Appointments, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Library Board of Trustees, appoint Eugene Scott for three years. Vaya Health, Region Three Board, appoint Rick French and Ronnie Race.
I entertain a motion to approve the appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointments as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? There being then, all in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those approve likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 28 through number 33, Mr. French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 28 is to increase the economic development budget for the estimated cost of historical building code review services. Budget Amendment number 29 is to increase public buildings' maintenance budget to repair damages to the, to the detention center Sallyport Door caused by individual driving through the closed door. And yes, that's what I just said, through the door. Number 30, to increase the sheriff's budget for equipment purchased, purchases by using insurance proceeds from a wrecked vehicle. The insurance proceeds were received in December of 2020 but not spent by the end of fiscal year 2021. Using the insurance funds for fiscal year 2022 requires a use of fund balance. 31 is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the use of state funds from distributions and. of the unauthorized substance tax. These special funds must be used to increase the law enforcement budget. The funds will be spent to purchase a law enforcement canine, a trainer course, vehicle cage, concrete bless you, cement pad, cage, fencing, doghouse and related items. Number 32 is to adjust the multi-year capital project budget for the courthouse park cost estimates for pavement behind the stage, which is about $7,000, $7,000 signage at the stage, about $11,000 and other potential costs as the project draws to a close. 33 is to increase the budget for fiscal year 2022, general fund transfer to the park improvement, improvements project to cover the cost of pavement behind the stage, stage signage and other potential items needed to complete the courthouse park project. Park improvements are being accounted for in a multi-year project fund. The general fund has transferred a total of 1.4, 1,456,000 to the park improvements fund since the 2019, 2020 budget year. And that's all the budget amendments. Be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, about the budget amendments.
Mr. Uh, Ms. French, on item number 29, I mean, I'm aware of the main, of the repairs to the Sallyport to Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir.
And of what ensued there, the guy decided he'd drive up to Sheriff's Department, just drive through and make himself at home and surrender.
Sure.
And, but that cost is $10,800 to pay for that. Are we going to pursue?
Yes, sir.
Against him because that was not his vehicle and he didn't have any insurance, I understand. Okay. Because I understand he owns some property in Stony Point.
We've heard that.
I've heard that, yes.
That he hadn't cleaned up either.
That he hadn't cleaned up. But I mean, my whole point is, you know, that I think it's only right that the county makes sure that we pursue the fact that, you know, if we can find a way in the judgment against him whenever they find him guilty or whatever happens, that we can get that included in the judgment to reimburse the county because it's not fair for taxpayers to have to pay for someone's damage that they caused in doing things they shouldn't have been doing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I entertain a motion at this time, gentlemen.
I have just one question. Ms. French, on number 32, I know it talks about the courthouse park, but that's actually a fund for all of the parks, correct?
It is, yes, sir.
Dusty Ridge, Wittenburg?
Yes.
And Courthouse, all of those.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments, number 28 through 33, as given.
Gentlemen, motions have been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? There being then, all in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number nine on the agenda tonight, other business county managers report, Mr. French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. The French, the library group is hosting a book sale on November 4th through the 6th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and November 7th, 21 from 1:00 to 5:00 at Commercial Park Drive, which is across from CBCC, Alexander Applied Technology Center. EDC received, EDC received $25,000 from Duke Energy for hometown revitalization grants. They awarded all those funds to 11 businesses. They, each business received $2,250. The businesses were Alexander Christian Academy, Bethlehem Ace Hardware, Bethlehem Dental Care, Brushy Mountain Brews, Burger Basket Friendship Upholstery Company, Fueled, Lenny's Mill, Mexico Viejo, Paul Robert Share and The Vault. And that's all I have except some things for closed session when we get to that point. Mr. Chairman?
Very good. Thank you, sir. The consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given to us in our books.
Motion's been made to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. This concludes the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, part of the agenda at this time. And at this time, I would call into, well, we need to adjourn, don't we? No, we don't have to. At this time, I'd like the Board of County Commissioners Consolidated Health Human Services Board meeting will call in into session at this time and I'd call on Leanne Whiston, no, excuse me, Department of Social, no, excuse me, let me get this straight first of all, okay? I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. And at this time, we have a public comment. Does anyone from the health board or Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that signed up for public comment? There being no one, then we'll move on to item number three, Department of Social Services Report, Landon Clemmons.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. First, I'm going to start with a review of our Medicare recipient eligibility determination audit called REITA. This occurs approximately every three years. The counties across the state are grouped into three cycles. We were part of cycle two with 34 other counties. This audit lasts over 10 months. They pull 10 active and take 10 negative cases per month for each of those 10 months for a total of 200 cases. The first table here talks about active and negative cases, which I just referred to, 10 of each are pulled each month. Active refers to cases that are currently open for people that are receiving, receiving services. Negative is, are cases that were denied and/or terminated. They are reviewing both the active and negative cases to make sure the right decision was made about eligibility. Unfortunately, in the active cases, 16 counties did not meet, that was 46%. We were one of those. We're also one of the 25 counties, 71%, that also did not meet the passing grade for those. Let me explain a little bit more what a passing grade means. On the second table, it talks about first, the active eligibility approval rate. The target of no mistakes to pass the audit is 96.8%. We got a 95%. On the negative, again, the, on denials and termination cases, again, the target is 96.8% and we had a 96%. So we missed it by 8%, 0.8%, excuse me. And then this last category here, we passed, so it's not in the top chart, but this is as they go through all of the cases they review, they look for the correct decision regarding eligibility, but they also review all the work done to process the application. So this last category is they're looking for other errors that might be found that didn't affect the eligibility decision, but might have led to an eligibility decision because process wasn't followed, just to give us feedback so we make sure we know what we're looking at. Just to put that somewhat perspective, the total number of active cases at the end of October was 7,000 cases. So during this period of having 200 pulled, it's really kind of a, we really always hope to pass, but it's really, it's a small section of what they, what they look at. Is there anything else I can, does that make sense? Is that? The next page talks a little bit more about that because it goes into the impact of that. We had what's called an overpayment in the amount of 357,000, I mean, $357, not 1,000. That would be a big difference, yes. The table here shows across the state in 2019 and 2020, how much all the counties put together. So we actually fared fairly well. This $357 was three different cases that their eligibility issues found out. Examples of that is in the first case, when the person entered the income, they put a start date of March instead of February. What happened was based on that income entry, they were found eligible for a higher level program for that one month of February and March went to the right eligibility. Well, in that one month, they got, they used the service and it came to $19 that we would have to pay back of services they obtained that they shouldn't have. So that's how that calculated. Another application issue was another one month mistake. The worker actually found it themselves, sat down with the supervisor, they staffed it and corrected it, but that was after one month of eligibility. And that case was another 100 some dollars. The last case is frustrating in that it was a candidate that moved from Tennessee to North Carolina. Normally in North Carolina, as soon as someone leaves, we generate a termination request goes to the other state so they can open it because you don't pay across state lines. Well, Tennessee refused to terminate their case until ours opened. We did finally agree to open the case in April. It didn't get closed in Tennessee till May and we are being billed and saying we shouldn't have done that. What we found out after the fact is there was a way to cover ourselves and that was to document a medical need that rose to the point that we should, needed to approve it to have that client get the service they need. We didn't know that that was a workaround. We will know that for the future and we will make sure we document that on any additional cases. A few examples of technical type errors, one case, a notice went to a client and said that their eligibility was from 6/1/2020 to 5/31/2020 instead of 2021 because that date was wrong. That was noted as a technical mistake, no payback, no issue. But that's, that's the degree of detail they look at and it's also to me, a little bit of lacking in NCFAST because this, this client notification is not generated automatically. We have to print that out for every case that's eligibility and fill those dates in. So it, there's a lot of opportunities for mistakes, we try not to make them, but unfortunately they do happen. Before I go on, I also, as on the bottom of the slide talks about in middle of last month, there was a webinar with all the cycle two counties talking about the procedure for corrective action. We were just informed a couple of weeks ago, probably last week, yes, that on December 12th, they've grouped the counties in, in cycle two into November's, some of the counties in December's, the others. We're in the December group and there's going to be a Microsoft Teams meeting. They have recommended that we have representation from Medicaid, the director and consolidated director, county manager and county commissioners and/or your representative at that. The only other thing I wanted to talk about on the audits was to let you know that this is just one of, of many audits that we have the opportunity to participate in. Martin and Starnes, I believe, is going to be reporting on another audit next month in which we had a $2,600 payback. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about, this is another case where it was impacted by COVID. The case was closed in the system, but the evidence was not closed correctly on one of the evidence pages. Because of COVID, it's automatically rolling cases and so this case was automatically rolled to keep eligibility open even though we had closed the case. We found out again that there's another workaround for that, which is to email the state so they can go in and override that. Again, we didn't know that at the time. We're now making sure that doesn't happen, but. Any questions on all of that? I know I covered quite a bit of information there. Our training position has been filled. Unfortunately, she's still spread many different ways because we have to get the modify, I mean, the administrative position filled to download some activities off of her, but those interviews are this week. I had mentioned last time about this low income water assistance program. We are supposed to get details this week of how that is going to be rolled out. When we were given an update in the middle of October, there were still issues across the state because only 80 of 450 providers had enrolled in the program and there's no guarantee any of them would be in our county. So hopefully they have been able to work those tweaks out and we'll let you know if there's any holdups on that. That should be starting in December, so hopefully we're going to get that information soon. And I think I mentioned this earlier too, just want to make sure it has actually started for our county. We're, we're in cycle five, I believe, and rolling out of the requirement for all users in NCFAST to be certified. All workers that have been doing this for a while have up to 18 months, but brand new workers have to get the certification complete in 90 days. The directors had a call last month and there's a lot of agreement that not only this NCFAST certification, but it would be great if the state had more Medicaid training that was statewide. Right now, every county has to do it themselves with your own workers and when you're down on staff and you have to use your current staff to train, it just stretches you further. I'm not sure where that is, but it's something that we are advocating for. Okay, then next slide. Child welfare, we, this is an area that we are challenged, we've kind of got a little bit over the hump in Medicaid, still have vacancies, but we are able to distribute the workload more effectively. We are still struggling, excuse me, a little bit, quite a bit in foster care and assessments for child welfare. We did ask to see if Vanguard could help us with contract staff, but they're also spread thin and we have not been successful in getting help there. Also, some statute changes have been passed regarding child welfare. This is just a quick, high level list of some of what they are. Some of this, the definition for caretaker and relative are modified. Some of that was to accommodate the change to child welfare policy to handle human trafficking. So they'd update the definition of caretaker for us to accept those reports. Child safety impermanencies around diligent effort to locate relatives. They also have some language in there about cases where we don't take custody versus when we do. That is an option. It's not one that Alexander currently uses right now. There is the option to have the court order a family that we're working with and the children are still in the home to help with compliance. We've, at this point with the court, have not chosen to implement those kind of services. There will be coming foster care bill rights, giving the foster parents ability to dress the court. And then improvements for the mental health services. There should be upcoming webinars on these changes. There are 67 children currently in care. This does not include the four in the foster care 18 to 21. That's, we've kind of had, held steady the last couple of months. It's not a good number, but we're, we're working on it. We've got, we are making some progress in the court now that we have stopped having as many continuances or not as many. We just got a report from the GL office on continuances and the percentages have gone down. So we are getting to hear cases in a more timely manner. One thing that I'd mentioned previously is with the Family First Prevention Services Act, they implemented that effective 10, 1/21, any child remaining in congregate care, any group homes more than 14 days, that the federal government would no longer reimburse us for part of that cost. The state has made some estimates of the cost across our state and reduced federal funding. And in the North Carolina statute, they have decided that they're going to help counties bridge that gap. So for the first year, we, the state will reimburse the county what would have been lost in federal funding and next year it will be 50% while the state works with agencies like Vaya and to, to get better services in place so we're not using that congregate care. We've got better transition services. And when Zach was talking earlier, he talked about Vaya, just a note that the tailored plans do cover all children in foster care. They're not on the standard plan. Lastly, for child welfare, I've been involved a little bit previously with Doug Lusby's group on disaster planning and emergency planning for the county. The state has come out and required that all child welfare agencies also have a disaster plan that details how we will accept reports 24 by 7, how we will track where children are, whether they're in our county or not and if they're impacted, communicating with other states if we've got people across state lines. And then also just the, the basics of record retention and access if we lose power. So that, they're supposed to give us a template shortly, so to use that, we've started to draft a little bit of that. draft a little bit of that, but we'll be filling in those blanks. Any questions? I think I'm talking fast, but.
Seems like in the second year, they're going to cut it to fifty percent, so where are they going? Where do you think they're going to come for the other fifty percent?
Right now, they're saying the county's going to be responsible.
That's it. That's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure everybody heard what was said there. You know, the federal government, they cut it. The state says, we'll pay a hundred percent the first year, but guess what, folks? The second year, you get to pay the fifty percent, because we're only going to pay half of it.
And then after that?
Then after that, you can see them looking to go down to the fact that the counties are going to pay it off.
Yeah, now, to clarify, this is for federal funding. Not every child in our care.
Right.
Gets federal funding, but it's, it's usually over fifty percent.
But it's still a cost that's coming down to the.
Coming down.
That's the point I'm trying to make. And I mean, I don't want to see any child that's not taken care of, but at the same time, you look at this, and you can see this cost's coming.
Yep. And a group home placing, depending on age, we're looking at forty-five-hundred a month in that ballpark. That would be fall in the county each month for any child in congregate care. It can add up pretty quickly.
Doesn't take long.
Last, I just wanted to talk about some community events. In October, the supervisor brought to my attention that it was Older Adult Matrician Week. That's, we've been talking about that in Homelessness and Matrician and the Agency. So DSS staff all got together and collected non-perishable food, and then we distributed it at the congregate site on the eighteenth. We had a trick-or-treat, trick-or-treat, well, yeah, event, foster, for foster kids and employee children on the twenty-ninth. The turnout this year was not as good as last year. I think, I'm not sure why, but part of it might have been the weather. People weren't sure how we were going to do that, even though we moved indoors. We have a Foster Parent Association meeting tomorrow night. That'll be the first time we've met in a while because of COVID and not wanting to be face-to-face. This is adoption, a National Adoption Month. We'll be talking about that a little bit on the director's call, what the state's going to be doing. At this point, with some of our, we haven't had any real recent adoptions, so we haven't actually planned anything in the county for this year. Usually, we try to do something at the courthouse. And this says December sixth, there's a foster parent orientation meeting. There's also one on November eighth that I forgot to put on here, with the plan to have our next MAP class in January. So that was, I think I went through quite a bit there. Any questions?
Quite a bit. Just one question about the, the heating, the low-income energy assistance program.
I have one there, too.
Okay. That's what, again, in late twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah, the, for energy assistance, which is the electrical, gas, or wood, will be the same as last year. It starts December for the disabled and senior citizens, then in January for the rest of the population, and that'll be, yes, that'll be the same as last year. There's no change to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ma'am, one question. On the low-income household water assistance, and then the low-income energy assistance, basically, you've got that about, only about eighty of four hundred and fifty providers had enrolled. Is that, is the, are the four hundred and fifty providers, is that water and electric?
No, that's the total number of water providers across the entire state. And so the state went out and wrote letters hoping that these providers would all agree to the terms that they wanted to. The original terms was, included requirement that if this funding was used to pay up someone's water bill, that they agreed not to disconnect for another three months past that, even if they didn't pay again. So there were some terms in there that providers thought were maybe a little more generous than they wanted to agree to. So they've, I think, negotiated some of those terms to make sure they get more providers on. We're just not sure where that is.
Well, and I mean, that, I was just wondering, I mean, do we, you know, do we as, as, you know, Alexander County Government, do we need to contact the providers that do provide water service in Alexander County and, and try to, you know, try to make sure? Okay. Well, okay, great, because.
Thank you.
We know people with the City of Hickory, and we know people with Energy United.
Yeah, there were three of them.
And we know people, you know, and so if we needed to, if we needed to try to help
Thank you.
With that, we, we could. Very good, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the information.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Senator. Public Health, Billy Walker.
I'm here tonight to give the COVID update for our county, and thankfully, it's looking a lot better than it did even a month ago. So to date, we've had six thousand, four hundred and ninety-one cases. We've had a hundred and six cases in the last fourteen days and fifty-four in the last seven days. We still have seven in the hospital. We've had a hundred and twenty-five total deaths to date. We're still the same percentages that you see on your screen, but my numbers are a little different than what was in your packet, because I turned it down Monday, so I can get you an updated copy. Our positivity rate is five point six percent for Alexander County and five percent for North Carolina. So I look back, and even a month ago, we were nine point nine for the county and nine point four for, for the state. So we've dropped fairly significant in the last month. I know you can't see what's on your PowerPoint, so I actually gave you a copy of this. This is how we are going through who qualifies for the booster currently. The state or the government, you know, they, they did a third dose of Moderna and Pfizer, and then they did a booster dose. So it's confusing for everyone. So we've come up with a decision tree that, so when people call in, we just sort of follow that guide, and we let people know if they're, if they qualify or not. And so now, Moderna and J and J are doing the boosters as well. And so they've also thrown in that now you can mix and match. So if you've got Moderna the first time and you want to do Pfizer, you can do that. If you got J and J the first time and you want to do Moderna or Pfizer, you could do that as well. So we are gearing up for the children's doses. They're going to make that determination eleven-five, and so we already know that they're going to come in waves. We know how much we're getting in those waves, and we'll be the only department to get the first wave, and it's going to be three hundred doses, and that'll be for ages five to eleven. And then wave two will be a hundred doses, and wave three will be a hundred doses. And I just found out today that people's drug is also going to be included in waves two and three, and they'll get a hundred each wave as well. So I, I did want to, that's not in your packet, that's new, so I wanted to add that, too. Any questions on COVID or the vaccines, or?
This sort of concerns me. If you've had the Pfizer vaccines, and you could take, that concerns me.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, I mean, it's sort of me like, and I know, I mean, I've listened to what they've said, and I've read the stuff that the Health Department said also, and that still concerns me. I just find it amazing, you know, well, you know, you can, as always told, I'm not going to say, well, I'm not going to say it, I'd have to, because we were always told, knock the mix to medication. If you got this vaccine, stick with that one, you know? So it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It, it just takes a lot of, just making an educated decision. And you can call anytime, and we'll walk you through it and help you make the best decision for, for you.
And that being said, Billy, I've already heard good comments about that, all right, from some people that's called about their, their booster shot and the information that they're getting, and they didn't call any names, they just said whoever. They talked to it, the Health Department, they were impressed with the information that they got and on the things that was going, for the difference in the information. So with that, you know, that's, that's good. It's good to hear good things.
Yeah, because the, the information changes, you know, a lot. You know, they, like you said, at first, they said, no, you cannot mix, and now you can. So it, it changes, and what we try to do is just walk people through and discuss what's best for them, and, and they can come in, and we can do whichever one they choose. My next item is COVID vaccine codes. Due to the fact that the five to twelve is new, we're going to have to add that code. And so that code is the first one. That's Pfizer, ages five to twelve, forty dollars. And then the Moderna is new as well. So that's for the third dose and the boosters, forty dollars. The ninety-nine-four-oh-one is brand-new they've come up with, because the ninety-nine-two-eleven is a nurse visit, and they're not reimbursing for that. And so since all our nurses are given vaccines, they've come up with a code to reimburse for just that little bit of time that that nurse is spending, and it's forty dollars as well. So we just need approval on those codes.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the new COVID vaccine codes, four-A, thirteen-A, and ninety-nine-four-oh-one, as presented.
So motion is made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made, it's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that will conclude the, the Board of County Commissioners Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. And at this time, we will, I'll find my paper here so that I can read it properly. At this time, at this time, we will stand in adjournment and, and make a recommendation that we go into closed session in the North County General Statute, one forty-three dash three-eighteen point eleven, paragraph A, subsection three, four, five, and six, economic development, contractual, and personnel. We will read adjourn attorney-client privilege. Right. Number three is attorney-client privilege, economic development, contractual, and personnel, and we will read adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only. I'll make that in formal motion, gentlemen. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you.